I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, thanks everyone. Oh, our presence this evening. And I would like to read a statement which requires board action. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 corona pandemic, by action of the school board of Prior Lake Savage area schools, all future meetings of the PLISAS school board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D.021, leaving by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. Due to the health pandemic, the school board has determined that it's not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or the school district's legal counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location. It is also not feasible for the public to attend at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic, in accordance with Minnesota statute 13D.021. Members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Meetings will take place via audio video conference and will be available on the district website, YouTube channel, and local cable channel 17. Public comment for school board meetings may be submitted to Martha Walls at priorlakesavage.k12.mn.us. Please submit by Mondays of the meeting date, no later than noon. I would take a motion to approve this statement. By Stacy, second. By Michael. Anyone have any comments or questions?
I do have a comment. This is Melissa. Are we planning to do a live broadcast for the next meeting?
I don't know that that will happen yet. It all depends on what the parameters are from Governor Walz as to the safety of our staff that have to be in the building for the live streaming, as well as just the functionality of doing the meetings. So far, it seems to be going well, so I think we'll probably be looking into something like that, yes. And our next meeting will be a month from now, and we have a meeting at the end of the month with our work session. Does that sound correct, Terry, from your perspective with the staff?
Yeah, I think the study session, April 27th, that normally isn't livestreamed anyway. It's always audio recorded, which we'd continue to do. I think that we can look at that May 4th one and see where we are. I know some of the conversation that we had with this, the meeting tonight was, really, it was about, this is our first time doing this. Let's give ourselves an opportunity to try it once before and record it rather than trying it for the first time with a livestream. And I think that was kind of the agreement and what you had decided as well, Lee.
Okay, if there are no other comments, all those in favor. Mary, did you draw a comment?
I just want to say that I think livestreaming is going to be a little bit easier than we thought. And I'd like to see if, just making a comment to the board, that if anything happens, if you need my help getting that done, then I'd be more than happy to help.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other comments, then I mean, this is a roll call vote, so I'll start with Jonathan.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And I will say aye. So that motion carries 7-0. Couple other comments. While we cannot be physically present in the same room, the school board encourages community and staff input through public forum and district email. During these unprecedented times, virtual meetings and conversation will be our new normal for the foreseeable future. Until such time that we livestream our meetings again, we encourage you to follow the district website to view recorded meetings and updated information. We ask for your patience as we adapt to this new type of delivery of school board meetings and work sessions that are recorded in their entirety, as always. Thank you. Again, as a reminder, please make sure you're muting your microphone when you're not speaking. Again, we will have the presentations. If you can hold your comments and questions until the end, and we'll call on you. And all of our votes this evening, as a reminder, will be roll call votes, and I'll call on each one of you during that time. Moving on to open forum, I do have one statement that was sent to me. I'm not aware of any other, but I will read this one. This is from Andrew Waller. It was sent on Thursday, April 9th at 7:00 PM. It's for public comment for the virtual school board meeting to the Prior Lake Savage area school board. I write this because while I understand the very difficult decision made to furlough the teachers and support staff in PLISAS early childhood programs, I'd like to voice my strong support for their return as soon as possible. We have been and remain so grateful for the influence these programs have had and want to make sure that this temporary measure is just that, temporary, and as temporary as possible. Study after study has shown that there are few things more influential in individuals' academic success than the educational experience kids receive in the early stages of brain development. As teachers, my wife and I observe every day how important intangibles like curiosity, motivation, creativity, confidence, resiliency, social behavior, and self-awareness are. All higher-order thinking skills utilized in elementary, middle school, high school, and beyond are reliant on the qualities and habits fostered in early childhood. From pre-K through college, there is no level of education more influential in the development of these than the early childhood programs. This isn't anecdotal or unsubstantiated opinion. This is based firmly in professional research. Until recently, our child attended Jeffers Pond Nature Preschool. We're grateful for the curiosity Ms. Anna fostered in our child while asking probing questions about outdoor observations. We're grateful for the reaffirming words from Ms. Jessica, helping our child become more confident in her writing. We're grateful for the guidance Ms. Jackie gave encouraging creativity in our child's nature journal drawings. We're grateful for the science experiments Mr. Thor used to teach resilience when things didn't initially go as expected. Each of these educators have played a significant role in the physical, emotional, and mental development of our child. We sometimes take for granted that our kids will be able to navigate our school systems when the time comes. However, I often, however, I am often reminded in my role as a teacher that this ability is not natural, but learned. Skills learned in preschool are necessary for paving a road to success. We tend to graduate kids to grade levels based on age, but we do a tremendous disservice to our children if we don't adequately provide them with the tools necessary for the next level. Preschool is essential, and all of the support that goes into children's learning is preschool necessary, or in preschool is necessary. It isn't simply a place where teachers supervise kids. Preschool is a place where kids learn how to be successful. I hope that you will agree with me and reinstate all programs and staff as soon as fiscally feasible. Thank you for considering my words and for the difficult and often thankless work you do. Andrew and Megan Waller. That's the only statement for public forum that I received. So I will move on now to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? By Stacy, second.
Second.
Jonathan, any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor. Oh, I can't say that. Okay, sorry. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 7-0. Just a second. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items that are routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. First are the financials. We have the check wire transfer disbursement summary, the wire transfer EFT-ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement for February 2020, building bond investment reports, monthly wire detail, monthly health dental wire detail, monthly check detail, and the monthly ACH detail. We have the approval of the school board minutes for the regular meeting on March 9th and our study session on March 16th. Personnel items, district retirements. I'm going to read these. It's a lot of years of experience, and I think that they deserve to be acknowledged. Jane Balo for gifted and talented, as a gifted and talented teacher for 20 years of service. Lori Bartman, special education teacher, 34 years of experience. Linda Dankers, special education teacher with 19 years of experience. Nanda Henshaw, a great second-grade teacher for 15 years of experience. Todd Kemper, grade seven, 27 years of experience. Paul Larson, physical ed teacher, 39 years of experience. And James Strandemo, eighth-grade teacher for 20 years of experience, or 20 years of service, I'm sorry. That's a lot of service. I just feel that's important that they are acknowledged. There will be some type of celebration, virtual celebration probably, later this spring. The resignations as listed, candidates for employment as listed, and the leaves of absence as listed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So am I.
By Stacy, second. By Michael. All those in favor say aye.
No, no.
You got a roll call.
Have it, die hard, I keep telling myself. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries 7-0. I'll move on to resolution for the acceptance of gifts. We have gifts, we have gifts sent in amount of, from Ms. Sansa, for $14.55, from Jeffers Pond, from Ed Visions, for $6,250, for Bridges Professional Development for Student-Centered Learning, and Jeffers Pond PTC for $319.53 to go to Jeffers Pond and Grade III Maple Syrup Project and Grade IV Resources. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So am I.
By Jonathan?
Second.
Who said second?
Mary.
Mary? Second by Mary. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself. That motion carries 7-0. Now we'll move on to Laker Pride. Terry, did you have an introduction, or is Caroline going to just begin?
Yep, my introduction is Caroline is here, and I am so proud of Caroline, Dr. Warner, and her staff for accepting the challenge of saying, sure, we'll do Laker Pride virtually. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Warner.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say good evening, and certainly for this opportunity to be able to share. I know certainly looks a little different than I was planning to do. We definitely wanted to be able to have some students and some of our staff come, but I'm going to do the best that I can to be able to represent all the amazing things with a really amazing program that we have at Jeffers Pond with our buddies. So at Jeffers Pond, we have a high level of commitment to that social and emotional learning. We pride ourselves in our responsive classroom strategies and our PBIS effort. And one of our efforts, one practice that we have been doing and see a large value added is that buddy program. So we intentionally pair grade levels and classes together so that that fostering of that mentoring relationship can happen so that students from lower grades can have that chance with students from upper grades. Some of those activities, I'm going to share in just a minute with some of those slides. Martha, if you can go back one second, sorry. What we do is, at a minimum, connecting, you know, once a month, from reading our books, showing off our projects, to doing some fun things outside in nature too. So you're going to see some of those pictures and just the impact of those experiences that really are there for both our buddies, the older and the younger, are amazing. And what's been fun to see is the span that that happens.
I think your microphone needs to get muted. Thank you.
That spans beyond even those specific scheduled times. So the fun things that we get to see in the hallways are the high fives, or the smiles, the lighting up of the faces that happen when those two buddies meet and see each other in the hall, and it's like the long last friend. They might have just seen each other yesterday, but that amazing, you know, experience that they have and connection that they have is just priceless. And then that connection is even, I've seen many mornings, 7:00 AM, there's a little preschool buddy who is grabbing their fifth-grade buddy, and they're playing in the gym together. And that authentically happening really reassures us that what we do intentionally is really supportive of what we want for kids here at Jeffers Pond. Now I'm ready, Martha. So I'm going to highlight just a couple of those. We partner our kinders in our third. And you saw just with what was approved with some of the funding from our PTC that made this possible. We have amazing opportunity in the backyard to be able to tap our maple trees. So we tap them, we boil the soil, or we boil the sap down. Sue, our naturalist, helped us with that piece. And then our buddies get a chance to experience that together and to taste what that actually tastes like when we make our own maple syrup. So they plan that project, they work together, they have the outside time, they collect the data. It's just a fun way for them to experience that outdoor learning. And then, next slide I have with our first and our fourth graders, so those are the two grades that are also paired, really sharing some of those authentic and academic experiences, so getting a chance to share some of their projects. The first graders do a big piece with their animal habitat, so they get to share that with their fourth-grade buddies, get to feel like the teacher in that and share with their fourth-grade buddy, you know, about the animals they learned about and the habitats they created. And then just enjoying the outside snow, doing some of the things outside that we have amazingly in the backyard. And then our second and our fifth graders, you can see sharing their picture books. They also create their own writing, so they get a chance to share that authentic writing. And then being able to do some of those nature hikes. A lot of the pieces that we've done with the buddy program has kind of evolved over the years and then really been able to capitalize on some of those Eastem opportunities. And it's been great to see that mentoring, you know, that happens again between some of the older and the younger students. And then the exploring and the just understanding and realizing all of the nature that we have outside and appreciating that. And then I think I have one more with our preschoolers and our fifth grade. So because we have preschool at Jeffers Pond, we also take that advantage to partner those up. So our fifth graders kind of do double duty, and they partner with our preschoolers and have just done some amazing experiences, planning, you know, experience, or experiments, excuse me, outside. And then they do a squirrel enrichment project, and then actually have presented for the last couple of years at the University of Minnesota Ecology Fair. And so you can see that picture where it's a fifth grader with their preschooler, and they stand by their board and ask questions, and they answer questions. So just a fun piece that, you know, is able to span even beyond our walls. And then just to end, those amazing connections and experiences throughout that buddy program, I truly feel are an integral part of what makes our social and emotional learning for students come to life at Jeffers Pond. We love seeing those connections, knowing all the students and learning so much from each other. I truly appreciate all the time that it takes because it does take intentional planning, organizing, and structuring those times. And then the ability and amazement that you see from that planned time is just so rewarding. I'll end just with another example that was an experience kind of spanning again beyond that classroom. Because I had a family that had just shared their responses with me, and they said a few years ago, or actually last year when they went to the homecoming game this fall, excuse me, this fall, her daughter ran into her buddy that she had from kindergarten, and her buddy is now a ninth grader in the band program. She remembered her and called her by name. And so the amazing simpleness of pairing those two students and just how strong that friendship and those happy memories are created are just one of those really amazing things that we get a chance to do that I think make our school special. So thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to personnel. Jim? Jim, we can't hear you. You're muted.
And it was such a good introduction, too. Sorry about that. Had a little one run around my feet. So before we get into the actual agenda item, I just wanted to take a minute to introduce Katie Sherman. She's online with us right now. She'll be the new principal of Five Hawks in taking over responsibilities for Tim Bell, who's retiring. And just a quick introduction, and I'll let Katie say hi. She is currently the kindergarten through sixth grade principal at Kenyon One Mingo. She has a background in elementary Spanish immersion as a teacher in both Minneapolis and Northfield. Has a degree from St. Cloud State in elementary education and Spanish, and a master's degree and specialist's degree from University of St. Thomas. And so Katie, welcome. I just give you an opportunity to have people see you and to greet you and for you to say a few words.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. And thanks to all of you for inviting me to be part of this meeting tonight. As Jim said, I am Katie Sherman, and I am delighted to have been invited to lead at Five Hawks Elementary and Prior Lake Savage area schools. I won't take a lot of time, but I'll just give you a snippet of who I am, both personally and professionally. I live in Northfield with my husband and three children. Actually, this fall started our empty nesting. Our third born left for college. Our second born was in college. And our first, our oldest, actually just graduated in May and is living in Lincoln, working as an accountant, putting his degree to use. And we were just adjusting to empty nesting, and bam, they're all home again. They came home in March. So that's been an adjustment and then a readjustment, but they are three wonderful kids, and we're actually capitalizing on this extra bonus time with them. A little bit about me and my hobbies. I love to be outside, whatever it is to do outside. I like to hike. I like to bike. I like to garden. In the winter, I ski in snowshoe. I have a little dog who they told me would not walk very far, and he gets many miles a week. So he and I are good walking partners. I'm an avid reader, and I capitalize on any time I can to spend with both my immediate family and my extended family. I am the product of a dad who was a principal and a mother who was a teacher. So education runs deep in my blood. Professionally, like Jim said, I, this is my 28th year in education. I've worked in urban schools. So I rule district right now. My, my.
Cutting in and out a little bit.
Working for Minneapolis years. And one of the highlights was really diverse staff. And I've kept those lessons.
Katie, unfortunately, you're breaking up on us.
For the Spanish immersion program across the district, so across all three elementaries and then moving into the middle school. And it was really through that opportunity that I realized.
Well, that's too bad. Lee, how much time do you want to go here?
I think we're going to need to move on.
Meeting our persons. Between Northfield and Rochester to just orient you a little bit.
Katie, I'm sorry, we're breaking up. We're not getting a good signal for the last few things you said. But we'll all look forward to meeting you again, if you can hear me. Yay, Katie. Shoot.
Yeah, that's too bad. Do you want, yeah. Okay.
Thanks for us.
I think we lost her. Do you want me to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. So, moving on, as we've talked about many times already tonight, one of the things that happens every April is that we look at what personnel needs to happen for the following year. And so what we are bringing to the board recommending for approval is a list of non-renews. And again, this list of non-renews, maybe not again, but this list of non-renews can include everything from folks that are tier one or tier two licenses, and it's an automatic non-renew. It could be because of performance. And then there are some names on here that would be a result of the class size readjustment. So it's a list that has a lot of people on there. We don't put the reason on here just for the sensitivity of the information. But again, there would be multiple reasons for a non-renew. And that would include licensure issues, performance, and then class size readjustment. So based upon that, it is our recommendation from administration that this list of non-renews be approved.
Katie, do I have a motion to approve the non-renewals?
So am I.
By John, a second?
Second.
I have a second. By Stacy, any comments or questions?
I have a comment. Lee, I have a comment.
Yeah, Mary, you can go first.
Enrique, go ahead.
I guess go ahead, Enrique.
Okay. So, thank you for adding some clarity, Jim. I'm curious. Having conversations with Richie Krasinski, the principal at Laola de Lago, the licensure for our Spanish immersion teachers works a bit differently than the rest of the certified staff. It's a multi-tiered system. They're tier one. Is that what we're seeing here?
Yeah, actually, if I can clarify that, that the tiered system is the relatively new system for all teachers. If they don't, they haven't been like in a teacher preparation program at a college and gone the natural, the normal way that most people do and got licensure. There are other ways to get licensure, but if you are a tier one or a tier two license, especially the tier ones, they all require you because they haven't followed the natural process, that there is a non-renew that we repost for the position, and it has to be posted depending upon the category of 15 or 60 days. Thus, here we are in April doing this, right? And then they can reapply, get a new license, and that can happen a number of years until hopefully they have finished a true teacher preparation program. So there are a number of people on here, not just at Laola, but there's a couple from other places, high school or wherever that the tiered licensure applies, and therefore it's an automatic non-renew.
Does that answer your question, Enrique?
Yes, it does. So, yeah, thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay, Mary, did you have something?
Yes, I'm, I guess my concern comes from the pattern here. I noticed last year we had a disproportionate number of teachers non-renewing for various reasons at Laola de Lago. And this time, I believe I'm counting six, which is a very high number from one of our smallest elementary schools, as well as more than pretty much any other school on here or any other district building. And I can't imagine it's easy to find Spanish immersion teachers who are also, not only are fluent in the language, but also are able to teach the various subjects. So I'm wondering if, Jim, you can elaborate or try, you know, give us any type of explanation why there's an overwhelm. why there's an overwhelming number from Laola de Lago.
I think it relates back to exactly what I said to Enrique. We have a lot of people that go in a non-conventional, through a non-conventional process in order to get licensed. Many of those are native speakers from somewhere else. And so they haven't followed the Upper Midwest way of going to college and getting the license, right? So the majority of those are simply an automatic non-renew because they have a tier one or a tiered license that requires that non-renewal to happen each year. So some of these folks are on here, again, you're going to see their name every year until they either get a tier three or tier four license or they run out of being able to have a tiered license, right? So the goal is to move towards that to have a tier three or tier four license. So in these kind of unique programs where you get a lot of people that are native language for immersion and they maybe grew up in Columbia or somewhere else, you're going to see their name on there every year because we have to non-renew them, repost to try to get somebody with a tier three or tier four license, and then we rehire. So they have to. So that speaks to most of it without going into names.
Just out of curiosity, how many of the people on here have been here more than one year?
I would have to go back and look at that and, you know, I could get you that number, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your response.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Michael?
I just want to underscore what Jim did too, without mentioning any names. I for one have received several emails from concerned people in the state that we were releasing a lot of teachers of color. And with diversity and equity front of mind for us as a district, I just want to clarify that when you see those numbers at Laola de Lago, you can't take them as face value that we've let go that number of people, especially because those names and those people bring diversity to our program and they are up for renewal, again, based on licensing. So I just think it's really important that the public understand and those who've expressed concerns that these are not people who were pulled out and reduced our diversity or our representation on our teaching staff. That's just the nature of how the licensing works and you'll see most of those faces back.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I believe I have a motion and a second. Oh, Melissa, did you have something to say?
No, I'm set to devote.
All right, Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Jim. Now we'll move on to unfinished business, the facility use fee approval. And I believe Leanne Wyreck is presenting. Are you there, Leanne?
Leanne is here.
Hi, Leanne.
Hi. Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Gina Fern, our facility use coordinator, to seek your approval of the proposed facility use fee schedule that you have in front of you right now. And also, they begin, it begins fiscal year 2021. In addition, I am requesting board approval for the minor revisions made to policy 902. Are there any questions or comments?
Does anyone have any questions or comments to Leanne's statement? I believe we went over this when Gina was.
March 9.
So do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So I'm over, Melissa.
Second. From Mary.
All right. Motion made by Melissa, second by Mary. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
Moving on to facility planning and construction. Jim Dole.
Good evening again, everyone. We have a few photos to share with the progress of construction. These were also shared with Fleur remotely. And just to give you an idea of some of the, a couple of the projects. So with that, Martha, could I have the next slide? Hamilton Ridge. It's really coming out of the ground pretty good. The brickwork is really nice on that building. It's going to be a very nice looking building. Next slide, Martha. Loading dock area on the backside of the building where the road will come through for our extra conditions for City of Savage. Next slide, please. This is looking at the front entrance and on your right, on your left is the back outdoor learning area coming off of the backside of Hamilton Ridge. Next slide. Another shot of the backside of Hamilton Ridge. Next slide. Some more winter conditions that actually brick all winter long. We put a plastic in heat and it costs a little bit of extra money, but it does not slow us down. Next slide. Another example of some of the really nice brickwork on that site. Next slide. This is an interior shot and as Joan and Marine put this PowerPoint together, you can see on the right side, it's kind of the view from our design work. And then you can actually see where we're at and how far we are on actual construction. And this is the main entrance coming in to the school site. Next slide. Another look at that from a different vantage point on second floor. Next slide. Just a lot of, lot of work going on, a lot of trades working together. A lot of work going on in the building. Next slide. Again, a lot of materials stored on site. We are enclosed, so it's really helpful to have some heat in the building and storage in the building and the trades working in the building. They're going gangbusters. Next slide. Example of some of the duct work that'll be hidden underneath ceiling tile. There's a lot of mechanical systems throughout the building. There's also starting work on the learning stairs you can see in the lower part of this photo. Next slide. What's the better example of the learning stairs? It's actually structured foam and with a topping of concrete on top of it. And again, the illustration on the right. Another example of learning stairs. Next slide. Just interior spaces, windows are going in, sheet rock's going up. We'll be painting soon. Next slide. Here's some bathroom work going on, tiling and getting ready to go, ready for fixtures and painting. Again, another classroom with materials. Next slide. Stairwell. Next slide. The classroom. Next slide. Break room for tradesmen. Next slide. Another example of the, this would be a room with a divider on it. You can see the track and the overhead. Next slide. Windows going in. Next slide. Again, looking down at the learning stairs and the upper level. Next slide, please. Some examples of mechanical equipment in the building and the penthouse. You can see a lot of fans and piping and pumps and a lot of equipment to deliver the energy we need. Next slide. Some more examples of mechanical pumps. Next slide. This is a fluid cooler up on the roof, air conditioning, chiller. Next slide. View from the top of the roof looking towards the west and north. Next slide. This curb's, curb's going in. A lot of earthwork going to start up here pretty soon. It is actually a pretty good site. It gets muddy, but it dries out pretty quick. Next slide. That moves us to the high school. Again, this is Area G. This will open up in December. Next slide. Another example of some of the Area G work. Next slide. These were the towers that we had completed earlier this year, but you can see with the windows and the brick. And we're getting ready to start now with irrigation and landscaping. Next slide. Another perspective from the north parking lot, looking at the scope of construction. See the generator there. We are going to start working down towards the loading dock. Actually, that's all been demoed already. We're starting footings and foundations for the loading dock and kitchen expansion piece. Next slide. This is inside the kitchen. So immediately after, we knew we were not going to be coming back at a regular schedule, we went in and started tearing, tearing and demoing the kitchen. It's a good head start for us and that's ongoing now. Next slide. Learning stairs at the, at the high school, a lot of high work. We had to support that soffit where that man lift is working. And so another opportunity for us to do some of this work while we have no students or staff in the building. Next slide. This is the old lecture hall. And if anyone remembers, we used to have tiered seating in there. We, that's been removed and it's going to become a multipurpose classroom. Next slide. Again, some more interior work. This is from the, on the right is activities and main office. And on the left would be the new entrance to the gold gym. Next slide. Activity center. We have painting going on. We have equipment going up. Lot of work in there. We're virtually done painting in there now. So again, we have moved right along on that. Next slide. Just another shot of the activity center. Handrails are going up. Next slide, please. Again, same, same space. Next slide.
That's it.
Okay. Are there any questions on the progress of construction? I know these are just two sites. We're working at every site. Excuse me, Greenwood is, we got a head start on that one as well, the kitchen and the boiler room. So we're moving along pretty good.
Stacy?
Yeah, Jim, I was just wanted to know from materials or any issues, materials wise or anything like that as related to COVID or anything like that? You know, are we getting delays in anything or is it all pretty much moving forward quicker than what we thought?
We're concerned about supply chain. We get mixed messages from suppliers. At first they'll say, we can't get this to you. And then a week later, they'll say, we can get it to you. So it hasn't slowed us down yet, but that's not to say it won't.
Okay. But for the most part, we're on track every site?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Good. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Next is the budget adjustments. We spent a great deal of time this evening in our work session talking about the presentation, the recommendations for the budget by each board member. So if you, to the public, I guess my message is if you didn't get enough information during this part of the meeting, please listen to the work session because we all had an opportunity to have some pretty good discussion on this topic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Julie to get started. Or maybe not. Maybe Terry.
Thanks, Lee. I'm going to go ahead and start things out, but I'll certainly be leaning into my team. Good evening, board members again, and thank you for taking some time tonight for us to continue to work through this process. On March, we shared with you what we had done to date aligned to the parameters that you set. We shared that in order for us to maintain our fund balance policy of eight to 12%. We would need to adjust the budget by about $3 million. We discussed the parameters about restoring class size ratios and estimated a range of FTE for the secondary and elementary level. I do want to remind the board that those class size ratios, we did not change the parameters that had been set by the board, nor did we change any parameters that we have been using for the last many years. Instead, that was an exercise to make sure that we had a systematic plan of analyzing student teacher ratio as we move forward and making decisions about staffing and calculations each year. The HR department and teaching and learning have worked on that and Jim will talk a little bit more to that when we get to that slide. I know it's a little confusing, but that process about the class size ratio was in process last year into this year and would have been taking place regardless of the budget adjustments that we're looking at right now. Additionally, in March, we reviewed the status of the open enrollment and enrollment numbers that you set and shared some additional revenue with you and cost savings. We still at that point, however, had about a million dollar gap in the $3 million adjustments. So tonight, we're bringing more detail to you with additional recommendations for consideration. I'd like to add that as we have gone through this process, we have taken a look at our guiding principles. And one of the guiding principles that we've also continued to think about during the past month has been making adjustments in our budget in a way that we can provide as many folks to stay employed in the district as possible. So as we move forward with that, that was a consideration that we had as well. We know that. And the next slide, please, Martha. As we review our budget, we know that we want to ensure that our budget reflects our strategic plan and the work in the staffing that's needed to ensure that that strategic plan comes to life. On the next slide, you'll see the presentation outcomes. As I said, we'll share the recommendations. We did have a robust conversation and discussion and we'll certainly welcome more of that as we get direction from the board and come back on April 27th with some additional clarification and recommendations and we'll seek board approval on May 4th. Just a reminder on the next slide about the projected $3 million shortfall. As we've shared with you and our public, we had about 200 students less this year, this current year, than what we had projected, which is contributing a great percentage of that gap that we have. Additionally, state funding has not kept pace with inflation. And we also had projected health insurance costs that were greater than what we had anticipated. The next slide shows those budget focus guiding principles that we have taken a look at and certainly want to ensure that, that we have the staff who can help us make that strategic plan come forward. The next slide reviews the timeline that the board, as we know, we start the budget process for the following year, a year out, and then made decisions. The board made decisions in October about those parameters as well as the open enrollment parameters. And the timeline, that's the second timeline, if you advance one slide, shows where we are. We're on April 13th, so we're going to share those recommendations with you. And then we'll come back on the 27th with that approval again on the 4th. Again, the parameters that we laid out, we had talked about earlier. And that restoring class size ratio again was a process that had started last year and we're continuing it to finish it this year. However, the ratios that we use for class size targets have not changed.
I'll step in here and talk a little bit about the next few slides. We did bring you information on our revenue budget and increasing the formula by 2% or $126 per pupil unit. We do anticipate an increase in enrollment by 125 students. And right now, we do project that we're going to meet that 125 students. So I do believe that we are on track to do that unless things change here. Of course, everything is changing, but um currently, we feel like we are on track. And we have an increase in special ed revenue and an additional achievement integration revenue. Um that was our original um estimates that we brought to you back in February. And since that time, we've also looked at bringing in some additional revenue um with MNCAPs. Our registration went through for MNCAPs and we had more students attending from Farmington. So we'll get some additional revenue from those student attending MNCAPs, and that we estimate to be about $200,000. And um in special education, there is a change this year in special education. I wanna make sure people understand that this is new. Um that we, this is a new base year with some different legislation happening last year. Um and so with that new legislation, um we are making some adjustments to how we're coding our special education costs. And by making those changes and working with the Department of Education on this, we feel like we can bring in an addition, an additional $400,000 um in how, just simply by um making those changes in um where money is being coded to, either it's federal funding or state funding. And so this, I wanna just make sure I reiterate that this isn't funding that we could have received in the past. And it's simply because of new legislation and this becomes our basis, so we're maximizing it the best way that we can in order to receive that additional revenue in special education. And then um this next slide is what we originally have presented to you for budget expenditures. And this is what, we had gone through this and talked about these items um that we felt were our expenditures for this year. Um and so those increased in about $5 million. But since that time, um we have had some changes in, in these expenditure assumptions as well. Um first of all, our health insurance rates, we projected to be at 12 and a half percent, but we are really looking at an 8% increase, which is a reduction in that expense. And so we're, um that reduction is about $300,000. Um we also went out since that time and did an RFP for life insurance, long-term disability insurance, and that projected savings that we know is $120,000. And then since everything has changed, since the um transportation, um we do have a projected expenditure savings in transportation um of about $250,000. Um and so instead of a really big increase for next year, we're anticipating a little bit smaller increase for um, for that. So that expenditure um savings is about $670,000.
Um following are gonna be several recommendations, um some that you saw before and some um updated recommendations, and I'd ask uh Jim Quorum to um go ahead and start those.
As we've uh talked about several times in here, but worth reiterating, um the restoring class size ratios were targets that have been uh in place for some time. Uh I think what has afforded us, I guess, uh the opportunity uh as kids didn't come last year is to really take a hard look at that staffing and kind of peel, peel it back to baseline and say, uh what would it take uh either increase or decrease to hit those class size targets? And um uh as we've talked about before, um the number of students that we anticipated coming and the ones that did, uh there was definitely a gap there, and based upon that, um there would be a, a reduction of some FTEs to get uh back to those class size ratios. So again, what is listed on here uh does just that, um gets those class ratios to um the board targets of 23.5 at the elementary level, 30 at the middle school, and 32 at the high school. And again, when we do these, um as far as a process, our whole point is to really understand what that number means, who's included in that, and in this case, we're talking about uh classroom teachers um only that have kids assigned to them. Um it is not inclusive of all people that have uh teaching licenses or licensed support staff. Um it, 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 that is not included in this calculation. So the total, uh although it's a separate process that we do, we should be doing every year and we are, um because there is a reduction, it would be included in this budget discussion as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'll uh present the teaching and learning restructure. This was presented uh back on March 16th. Um currently, what we're looking at is we have four technology integration specialists. Uh it's teaching and learning, uh function is uh supporting uh classroom staff uh in uh delivering curriculum materials as well as technology. Uh we're looking at proposed restructure for 2021, um to go from four tech integration specialists down to two um staff members that would focus on instructional literacy and instructional math. And so that would be a, a savings uh to, to the technology budget. Um again, these, these are uh, we've been talking about the, as far as technology integrations, we've had tech integrations in the district for approximately six years uh when we got, went to one-to-one devices that are eight to 12, and so they've been just absolutely instrumental in working with our staff and learning the tools, softwares, new curriculum, online components, LMS and, and, and uh our Laker learning plan. And as we shift and move forward, um again, they uh though, as a teaching and learning department, we'll continue to support uh technology integration um and continue to support staff in those ways. Uh but looking at this through the lens of a restructure, um that's what we are bringing forward uh at this time.
Thanks, Jeff. Um this next slide, uh we have reviewed um every vacancy that has come up in the district in recent months. And at this point, um we're recommending to not fill these positions. I understand that that will mean that the work will look different and we'll have to deliver services and support um in different ways. Um I also wanted to uh, to just share that over the past several weeks, as we've watched what's happening um uh in our economy and, and certainly uh through our own process within the district, uh we put a priority on examining ways we can um keep uh as many employees employed as possible. Um uh if these staff had not left our district, um I cannot tell you that we would be recommending these reductions at this point. However, um we'd like to consider, consider how these services can be done differently and not uh fill these positions rather than reduce any additional positions and jobs at this point. The next slide uh is looking at administrative adjustments. Um and as we look at administrative adjustments, we're recommending a target of $130,000. Um I'll be beginning uh in July, my third year of my final contract uh or my, my third year, the third year of the final year of my current contract in July. And um I would ask the board uh not to increase my salary per the current contract agreement um as a portion of that. Additionally, some options uh that we have available to us may include um administrative cuts or savings that may be realized uh through contract negotiations. And we'll need a little bit more time to uh flush that out in full detail, uh but you can see that target amount there.
In the area of special education, um how we staff according to needs due to IEPs. And so as we look, take a review of our IEP needs of students uh that are in the district as well as ones that may be leaving the district or graduating. Uh we do know that uh we have, uh we will, uh we are forecasting a one FTE uh reduction in um a one-to-one nurse for our students. This is not a reduction as part of our health, uh health services model. This is, these, this is a student that requires a one-to-one nurse, and that's, that's students leaving our district. So due to a lack of IEP needs, we're projecting we will not need that uh, that support. Uh we currently also have two FTE sped resignations, retirements, looking at caseloads. Uh we're not projecting to, to uh, to fill these, given where the number of students we have with IEPs relative to caseload management. And then we also have two uh FTE sign language interpreters, again, with students leaving the district, uh would not need that one-to-one support. Uh these are not the teachers at the high school teaching our sign language. These are again, um sign language interpreters that are specifically working with students per their IEP. And then we're also forecasting a reduction in paraprofessional support uh due to lack of student IEP needs. And of course, uh with special education, we're always looking at uh student needs, students that may come in over the summer or as they're evaluated, we may see some adjustments as we go into next year. And like always, uh if there are additional needs that do come as a result of IEP need, IEP needs, those would always come before the board. But looking at what we're forecasting now, this is what our adjustment would be in special education. On the operational adjustment side, we're anticipating a $75,000 savings in energy efficiency and then looking to reduce some supply and technology budgets of up to $100,000.
Um this summary slide, I just reviews that full package of additional revenue projections, um projected savings and budget adjustments. Uh we know that we're bringing forward more dollars than we had originally brought to the board. Uh there are, there were certainly uncertainties before COVID-19, and there are more uh uncertainties now um with the, with the future state of state funding and other budget implications. Um we don't know exactly what will happen with enrollments and special ed needs or state finances, uh and we believe that these recommendations provide us with more flexibility. Um like always, uh if things change, we will make adjustments um as we, as we move forward. So as we get to uh the end of the presentation, oh, then the other uh, the other thing that we'll continue to look at are the long-term strategies. Um as we look at what the uh enrollment uh trends moving forward and budget trends moving forward look like, we'll continue to study um the long-term strategies that we had also presented before the board in March. And then as we look at the outcomes again, um there are a lot of things happening right now as we uh look at the budget at this time on, because of the lower enrollment and the healthcare costs that we talked about uh and not funding, not coming, not, not staying um, state funding not state coming up with inflation. Uh we're in the process of uh reviewing everything that we've looked at to date and are bringing forward to you um more than we had anticipated at the last meeting. Uh I think this gives, as I said before, it gives us flexibility, and I believe it also gives the board some flexibility to look at these recommendations. And uh we are happy to answer further questions and uh we're grateful to the questions that you posed during the, during the study session.
Okay, um Jonathan, do you have some comments?
Um sure, I will, um obviously, most of mine were made earlier. I, I would like to ask um Julie, uh she mentioned that it, we do seem to be on track um with enrollment. Obviously, we know the world is changing and, and kind of all bets are off in terms of knowing exactly what's gonna happen in the fall, but she felt uh fairly confident about that. I was just wondering, Julie, if you could elaborate a little bit um on your reasons for optimism?
Sure, um I, we just went through a process of um looking at all of our open enrollment, our registrations at all of our schools, and um we're on track at the elementary to meet our budget at the elementary. And then we also are a little bit over at both our middle school and our high schools, our, our high, middle schools and our one high school. Um I should say that um right now, it's hard to determine how many people are leaving in the fall, so I'm happy that it's over a little bit. Um the numbers for registration are a little bit higher um at both of those level, levels because typically in September, we see quite a bit of loss um before October 1. And so that's what leaves me to, leads me to be um a little optimistic that we will meet our 125 for the, for October 1.
Thank you for that. Um and then I guess my only other uh comment would be, based on all of the prior discussion, um I do think um, I do think we probably wanna make sure you have clear direction in terms of where we'd like to see things settle on with uh, with the number. There was discussion about that at the end of the study session, and for me, um I'm comfortable um with that targeted in the original number of, of the three, which would allow us to perhaps bring some of these ideas, things we were talking about uh back or or potentially be some other, some other changes as opposed to what's already discussed. That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh Melissa?
Uh I agree with the staff vacancies adjustments, uh idea, uh recommendation. Uh but again, as I mentioned in the study session, um we've said that the most important thing is to teach our students. And um again, I'd like to, I haven't seen a priority matrix as to the essential employees, not just during COVID, but during budget times. Um it's the, it's the forward-facing teachers, and we've given them the tools at this point uh with staff um uh support um in, in learnings and teachings and so on. We've, we've had, we've given them that staff development already. And at this point, I, I'd suggest that we take a look at the opportunity as a consultant basis. We've got several areas where I think we could do the work ourselves. Either we've done it already, um like in the case of the racial equity consultant, Shri Kehali, um where we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um so I think we've gotten that, we've mastered that, and instead of entering further into third year, I would, I would suggest that that would be an area to consider. Uh then the second area with consultants would also be the um, the uh facilities um to take a look, kind of back up and take on more responsibility of our own instead of relying on Nexus. We um spent millions with them, and, and this would be a time that we could actually uh do that with our buildings and our maintenance, perhaps on our own, navigate some of those facility challenges and energy challenges um and, and save, save a lot of money there because uh losing teaching staff, I feel, is the last resort. So I'd like to hear more of a discussion around those things too.
Okay. Thank you. Um Mary?
Um first of all, I'd like to reiterate that, yes, I believe that the um study session, we had a robust conversation, uh although not nearly enough time and um probably lacking on a lot of details. So we need to, first of all, put all our cards on the table and see what's available and that anything that is um staff, educational, student-facing, teachers would be our last resort. I would like to look at uh uh further administration cuts. I do not believe that the percentage is equal either in dollars. $650,000 for 10 and a half teachers versus one admin for $130,000. I think we can do better than that. Um the impact to the students and what we do as a district is not equal, neither is the cost ratio. Um so we definitely need to look at that, but again, putting everything on the table. Uh I certainly do not uh agree with removing any of the paras or any of the student support staff or special education. We've been short on that for a long time. Uh all of the, the supporting staff, particularly the paras, provide uh invaluable support to our teaching staff, um especially as we uh potentially uh uh rebase line or increase class sizes for an already stressed um teacher population uh and teacher support staff population. But I do feel that the board needs to feel some pain here too, and I'm going to make a motion that the board forfeit all school district compensation for the next three years. Lee?
I'm not sure that a motion can be made at this point. Um I would need a second for that, and then there'd be discussion. Um I don't know that we can make a motion during this discussion period. I, I guess I need some direction.
I would call point of order. That's on the agenda.
It's not an agenda item for this evening, you're right, Stacy, so it would be point of order.
Point of order.
I would be open to that conversation at the next study session as we are revisiting all, all different options.
I would be open to discussing that as well. I think that would be a great idea.
Okay. Anything else, Mary?
No, I think I would, like you said, Lee, I would highly encourage everyone to listen to the uh study session, and I'm hoping that in our next uh meeting, uh we can add as many options as possible uh to a to avoid staff and direct student impact to our educational outcomes. I believe that's the most important thing that we can do for the district right now is look for anything else other than cutting staff, especially the educational support staff and the teachers.
Okay, Michael?
Okay, I will also say that we had a pretty intense discussion. I'd just like to hit a few points again for anybody who might listen to just the formal business meeting and, and did not go back and listen to the study session. First of all, I always want to be careful of the image that what we're portraying to the public and ask, encourage them to ask if they have questions. But school finance is incredibly complex in the way it's broken down in finance and budget categories. We can't necessarily take from one budget bucket, Julie, correct me if I'm wrong. We can't take from something like Fund 06 where construction and NEXUS is and turn that into teacher salaries, for example. I think, so I think we have to be really careful. I know I've, I've fielded several calls over the last few days, including things like, why don't we halt construction and just keep all of our staff paid? And it's just not that simple. So I just want to be clear for folks listening, how that works. I would like to echo what Jonathan said. I would be very comfortable looking at, although I appreciate you came forward with a robust cut of 3.4 million. Since you did that work directed by the board, the world turned upside down, and I would be much more comfortable looking at a $3 million reduction to do whatever we can in this moment to protect jobs, to, to take care of our students, knowing that cuts may be harder and deeper next time we go through this, and just be very transparent about that. And just to reiterate that, you know, we really have to be driven by our mission and our strategic direction. And a couple of things that, in the work I did prior to coming here that I'm looking at is, I don't want to lose our social-emotional piece, our attention to diversity and equity and closing the achievement gap, and student-directed learning. And when I use those, you know, that visor to look at our budget, we can't keep everything, I realize that. But the dean comes to mind for me in that, in terms of the social-emotional piece and the support to our principals and in turn to our teachers. I'm concerned about that cut, and perhaps more now than 30 days ago, I'm concerned about our tech integrationists. Feedback from teachers are that they are essential under any circumstances, and now we don't know what the future holds in our ability to be online. So in terms of the vacancies, again, we talked about if we do have to leave them vacant, I would say let's leave them vacant with an eye to looking at when we can bring them back on board. But if a vacancy that was already resigned temporarily can save the job of someone right now, I'm in favor of that if we don't lose sight of what those positions are. So I just, I think those are the main things. And I know we talked about administration. Dr. Stahl, you mentioned you're asking for a rate freeze for yourself. But also, again, for those who are curious, there are different buckets for how the admin team is, is paid as well. There are certain positions that are funded through referendum or whatever. So I just want to be careful we're not comparing apples to apples when we look at how the budget comes down. So that would be my input, and I'd be curious if, you know, if the rest of the board, if we can give that direction overall to reexamine that number that we're asking them to come back with.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Stacy?
I'm going to hit the highlights of what I talked about, and Jim kind of clarified it already with how that class size is specifically calculated as it relates to a teacher and not, you know, other supports. So just the questions on that. And then Julie, I just want to ask one additional question, just the special ed, the base year. So that only comes around like when they reset laws, is that it? Or is it every so often we reset on a base year where we have that? How does that work?
That's a great question. We, in 2016, they re, they did some changing in how we're funded for special education, and that became the base year. And then they found some inequities in that. And so now they're looking at this year as becoming the new base year for things moving forward. They did make some changes in how they're funding cross-subsidy payments. And in order to do that, they need to recreate and make it more even, and that's why this year is becoming a new base year. So it's also new legislation that that usually happens. That is correct, Stacy.
Okay. And then I, you know, I express concern about technology integrationists, that restructure just at this point in time with what we've been through this last month, and then looking for some clarification as it relates to exactly what the instructional literacy and math person would do in, in place of that. And Jeff, I know you talked a little bit about that there is some overlap, which I'm glad to see. As one other follow-up question on the technology integrationists, currently, are they divided by building? I mean, isn't it like a couple in the elementary, one focused middle school, one at the high school? Or does there more interlap or interplay with that?
The, largely, there, as you pointed out, two are assigned to the elementary, one middle school at the middle school level, one at the high school. But they spend a tremendous amount of time collaborating, partnering with each other to support each other as well as the technology department. So there is some overlap, but that is largely how they are split.
Okay, but it's well-covered, is what you're saying, as far as the need?
It is covered, correct.
Okay. So yeah, I express concerns around that. Then, as well, on the elementary dean, just with being in the buildings, seeing how critical those are, you know, to our principals and staff for that, another person to go to if there's an issue, or even with, you know, the Q comp and the evaluation that the, the principals have to do, that they need, you know, some help with that. So that, that is concerning to me, too. I know that we already split their time, as it is already with the elementaries. So that one was a concern. I think, Julie, I talked to you, just, you know, get with getting closer to that 3 million number, if you felt that that was comfortable in the sense that we would still stay within the fund balance policy of 8 to 12%, which I believe you said yes. And then one other, yeah, right, okay, thank you. And then one other point was just on the administrative piece. I know, looking at, because so much of what, I mean, trying to get down to kind of like the bare basics and with that classroom time, time with students is, and I know we've looked at it before in the past, is just the extended contract days where, you know, administration is not necessarily, you know, it's extended time when kids aren't in the, you know, they're gone, it's summertime. Maybe, you know, looking at some efficiencies there, if, if that's, you know, savings. I, I don't exactly know, but I mean, I just, some ideas that I know we've talked about in the past that could be helpful. I think that's it for me.
Okay, Enrique? Is he still unmuted?
No. There we go. It finally unmuted, third time's the charm. Thank you. To echo the sentiments of my colleagues in the earlier study session, we do need to evaluate all cost objects when evaluating how and where to curb our expenses with the very last resort being a focus on personnel expenditures. I know personnel is oftentimes an easy, big knob you can turn to try and cut expenses fast, but that can have all sorts of unintended consequences down the road that we need to be very careful of. Though when proposing personnel reductions, there also needs to be a balance in how those expenses are restructured between the teaching and learning staff, special education, PARAs, and other technology staff that are supporting that act, active effort on the front end, and then the administration on the backend. So for me, it's very difficult to accept $130,000 and $130,000 in proposed cuts in admin while 1.8 million is focused on those that are at that front line who are delivering the services and tools directly to our learners. That puts us at this very tenuous position where we can widen the rift, or those who are on the fringe might start to slip and not get the support they need. Those who are already not getting the support are going to fall off even further. So there's this, this entire shift that can happen as a consequence of how we propose making these cost-cutting measures. So I just want to remind us of one of our core values from the strategic framework, wise stewardship of not only knowledge, but also human, financial, physical, and environmental resources. We have to maintain those solid working relationships internally as well as externally with our community and deliver on the value that they're expecting and that they are supporting with their, with their dollars, with their volunteer hours, with their time in this district. We saw in the Laker Pride presentation on Jeffers Pond, their buddies program earlier in the board meeting. And while looking at that presentation and the excitement and the connectedness that each one of those learners had, I wonder, as I look through the proposed cuts or the non, the restructuring through attrition by not hiring a replacement naturalist, I wonder how that program and some of the other programs similar to that might be affected or how that might look differently without somebody there coordinating that effort in support of one of our strategic directions, which is to integrate eSTEM focus across all the, the district. So I just want us to own that, be mindful of it as we go through all these different proposed changes and challenge the administration to go back and let's, let's dig a little deeper. Let's look at everything here, look at what that strategic framework has outlined already, and be very intentional about any of the proposed cuts or changes that we might make in order to come back with that $3 million cost savings number. And one additional thing that we as a board might also need to get to a point to consider, we'd have to evaluate what the requirements are to get to that point, but the fund balance policy. So the board could make some adjustments to decrease the requirements for the fund balance policy. I don't want to do that arbitrarily. I want to make sure we're very intentional about anything of that nature that comes forward. But just as something to prepare, as Mary said, board members, we need to come to the table and, and also deliver in this because we're all in it together. So let's put all the different possibilities on the table.
Okay. I would like to reiterate that, please, if the public would listen to the work session, there was a lot more discussion during that period of time versus the business meeting to go back and review what's been said. I think as a board, we are making it fairly clear that we want to stay at that $3 million mark. We want to protect our teaching staff and those that are closest to kids in, in their education. And I would agree with that. At the same time, we have to realize that there also are supports that these teachers need, and we have to be careful as to where those cuts go so that the supports are there, both in the classroom and at the administrative level. We're asking you to look at the administrative level and the DSC, I believe, is most of the focus, to see if there's something else that can be done. There's some mixed feelings about replacing those that are leaving by attrition. I support that, that we wouldn't fill those positions at this time in order to protect those that are presently here. However, I would encourage administration to, and I believe a few others voiced this, that we need to look at other ways to continue in some of those positions. For example, our nutritionists, or not, naturalists, used to be a half-man position. It was also funded by a grant. There were some other options with how we made that program get going. So that would be a challenge to see how we can still do some of those things. You know, there's, there's not a lot of options when you're cutting, and it's painful no matter what we have to do to get this budget back in order or get it to where we need it to be. And if it's not people, it could potentially be programs, and that concerns me as well. We have got some great programs, and I would want to, I would hate to start looking at cutting programs that we have for our kids. But we also need staff to run those programs. So it's kind of a, it's a difficult position to be in. And I guess with that, I'd like to ask the administrators if there's more direction they need from us, if there's something else we can help you with. Sounds like we've got a lot of ideas and suggestions for you. And I do know that we will have another work session the end of the month, and our plan is to have further discussion in the beginning of May and potentially vote on a, a budget adjustment. So with that, I'll turn it back to Terry and any other administrators that want to speak.
Thanks, Board. Thank you very much, both in the study session and during this discussion. I, I do feel like there's some, there's some themes that we will definitely take a look at and take a look at what else to bring forward and how else to take a look at the guidance and direction that you've provided us at this point. And we will be coming back with, with some, some changes on April 27. And I know that along the way, if we have questions or need additional assistance, that I can pick up the phone and call you at any time, and I'm grateful for that. So thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? Jeff?
I do have one clarification I'd like to ask. One of the parameters is to restore class size ratios. So it sounds like what we're taking away from that is that's a parameter we're going to back off of. Is that accurate?
I don't believe that that was necessarily accurate. If we continue with the process we started last year, I guess I, I assume that that we would continue along that same line.
So that parameter will remain in place, then?
That's my understanding. See, Stacy's open. Are you, did you have something to add, Stacy?
I was just going to agree. That was mine as well, Lee.
Okay, Mary, did you have something to say?
I do think that the class size, restoring class size parameters, I'm not quite sure. I like the term restore because while I understand, again, like I said in the study session, it may look good on paper. I think that when we look at core classes, having the larger class sizes we already have, and then cutting staff and potentially making them larger with less support staff, I would like to re-investigate that process and try to lessen the impact upon students, the stress upon the teachers who have been, of course, you know, doing the social-emotional learning and everything else. I mean, we talked about that in the study session. So I'm, I'm not in agreement that that is 100% the way that I would vote to go per what Jeff made the assumption of in his original statement, that we are, that we are not necessarily considering restoring class size ratios as a standard going forward.
Jonathan?
For me, if we utilize those ratios as a way that we hire when we are growing, we ought to be employing the same ratios as a way that we are managing in a moment where we could be going in the way. I would love to not lose anybody. And if there is a way to have that be a smaller, a smaller change than that, that's great. But it is reasonable to use the same metrics during a rising enrollment and the deep, or a moment like this. So I, I'm okay with keeping that.
Anyone else? Any administrators have any other questions or clarifications?
Lee, I have a comment. It's Michael.
Oh, Michael, okay.
Sorry, if I'm not out of order. I just would like to say that if we're going to not look at restoring class size ratios, then that's a bigger discussion because if that's how we use a budget parameter going forward, are we talking about changing the class size ratios? So in other words, we either have to use the one we set out and ask them to use and stick to it, hiring and downsizing. use and stick to it, hiring and downsizing, or we need to reestablish those parameters because I don't know, I'm uncomfortable with the squishiness of that for budgeting in the future, if that makes sense.
Melissa?
This is Melissa. I agree with Mary and her thoughts there.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other comments on the budget before we move on? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to the naming of the elementary. Laola Delago at Greenwood. Dr. Sal?
Excellent. Thank you, board members. I know we talked about this the last time we were together. And at that point, I shared with you the policy that we have about school naming. And it really does not address the situation that we are in as we do move Laola Delago to Greenwood Elementary. So what I brought forward is the administration's recommendation that we maintain Greenwood as part of, as part of the name and honor the history, the rich history of Greenwood in Prior Lake Savage area schools, while at the same time, we recognize that this will be the new home for Laola Delago. So our recommendation is that we officially rename Greenwood Elementary to Laola Delago at Greenwood.
Do I have a motion to accept the renaming?
So move.
Jonathan, second?
Second. Second. Mary?
Any other comments or discussion?
Melissa, I have a comment. Every time we name a building, change a name, there's costs involved with signage, correspondence, everything. If we left it just as Greenwood, that would be a cost savings.
Any other?
Everything's on the table.
Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost is. Melissa may have a point. Can we, and Lee, you would have to jump in on this. I don't have a problem with the renaming at all, but if we can save even a couple of bucks at this point by delaying the signage or the cost associated with that, does, I mean, can anyone weigh in that? Does that help us?
I don't know what the cost is either. I do know that there's a strong feeling from Greenwood that they would like to, and other community members, that Greenwood remain on that building as it has a lot of historical value for the community members. And at the same time, Old Delago would like to have their own identity in their building. So this recommendation, in my mind, achieves both of those things. I have, I don't know what the cost would be. I'm not researched that. If we can minimize that cost, I think that'd be a great idea. But I really would be uncomfortable taking away the identity of both of those, for both of those reasons. Michael?
I would just, I would reiterate that too. Certainly, we can look at costs, but I think it would be a disservice to not focus on the school that will be operating there, Laola Delago, who's now completing their fifth year. And I think it's one of our important programs that we offer in our district that is unique. And so I would hesitate backing off on including that naming right now unless we find out it's preposterous to proceed in the next six months with a sign or something.
Yeah. Lee, let me just qualify what I stated. I don't think anyone, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I don't think anyone, you know, we've already talked about this, Greenwood and Laola Delago is fine. The only thing we're asking here, not about the naming, is if replacing the signage and having something custom built and changing letterhead and stuff like that, is there a way that the board can vote on this and yet delay it in order to save money? And not delay the actual name that we voted on, but delay the implementation of it just for the money savings? I don't know what the answer to that is. And if Jim or whomever else is supposed to implement this, if there's a way, then so be it. But as far as I know, I'm perfectly fine with Greenwood, Laola Delago on the name, and especially keeping Greenwood given the rich history.
I'm not sure that any of the administrators can answer that question. I think they could certainly look into what that cost is to make those changes. And I guess that the statement we're wondering about right now, or the motion that's on the table, is whether we're willing to agree to the renaming of the building. I see a couple dots came up here. Stacy or Jonathan, did you have something to say? Jonathan?
I was just going to say, I think that the signage and the timing of the signage, in my mind, would be a management decision that they can get done when it gets done. It's going to be coming from a budget. They're not going to be sending a budget to us for a new sign, for changing signage. My hunch is if they've come to us and we don't think it's the right time, we won't do it. But I think voting on the name change is what we're doing now, and I think it's appropriate. And I also share the idea that if we can delay the work, save a buck, it's fine. But I think what we're voting on is just changing.
That's right. Stacy, did you have something to add?
I'm just ready to vote on the name.
Okay. I believe I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa? Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have a presentation by Rush Breeds.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick and School Board. Thanks for having me this evening. I'm going to go quickly through our co-curricular report. I'll start with the next slide. Martha, this is really how we're trying to define success in our co-curricular programs, and it's never been more important than right now with COVID-19. Our coaches continue to engage with our athletes, and their goal is to still try to find ways to create some fond memories for them from a distance and continue to develop relationships both between coach and athlete and the athletes themselves, as well as teach some life lessons. Those core values that are listed underneath each one of those criteria for success are really important in what's driving our distance coaching right now. Our next slide is where we sit in terms of Minnesota State High School League enrollment numbers. Prior Lake has moved up a couple spots from a year ago. Minnesota State High School drops the free and reduced lunch enrollment numbers to get the number there that you see on your screen. So looks like right now, the fifth largest high school in terms of MSHSL enrollment. The next few slides are our numbers for fall and winter participation in each one of those programs. As you know, some of these programs have a finite number, a ceiling, so to speak, in terms of how many we can have on a roster. But some programs like football and swim and dive and cross country and track and field, there's unlimited numbers there, and our participation continues to grow in the winter season as well as the fall season. If you see a number there split in half, that is boys first and girls second. So in basketball, we had 48 boys and 39 girls. Boys have five levels, but we haven't had enough girls to carry that fifth level, the nine B program. And then there's a bit of a difference in the number of girls playing hockey versus the number of boys, but our girls' numbers are growing at the youth levels. Very pleased with the number of participants in each one of our programs. We saw a very high level of total participation between arts activities and athletics with student clubs. I want to share with you some of the other opportunities that we have on the next couple of slides here for our students to be involved. Just some clarification on what is considered a fine art. If the Minnesota State High School League has a sanctioned event, then it is a fine art. And so Band and Choir are considered fine arts. Our visual arts program through the Salsuburban Conference and through the State High School League is a fine art, along with speech, robotics, and one act. And then we have activities that the school district sponsors with Fall Musical, Spring Play, Knowledge Bowl, Mock Trial, and a fairly new activity that's going extremely well, DECA, popular with our MNCAP students primarily. We also have school programs on the next slide, Martha, along with student-led clubs. And I didn't put all of our active student-led clubs on there, but each year, we charter clubs based on student interest, and their only requirement is that they find a staff member willing to help supervise and organize. But these are very much student-led. Those school programs are programs that provide some sort of service back to the student body. And I think we do a tremendous job with yearbook and school newspaper, the volunteers through NHS, our student council is very active and very much student-led in our building. And we're revamping how we're using LIVE with our transitions for students both coming into ninth grade and then students moving into the district. Our students working to advance technology is our SWAT team, and they've done a great job to help with tech integration and iPad enrollments. And then we have ECO team there that's doing an outstanding job with our gardens. So very active student groups. I want to, on the next slide, just do a shout out to our new Power Club. This stands for Passion and Open-Minded Women Educating Respect. We have many students that have come together and sort of used their voice to point out some things they're discontent with and some things that are worth celebrating in our, in our school building based on diversity. And they did two presentations, one for staff and one for the community at large. Just really pleased with how Student Voice led to this group coming together and how well they've represented themselves and really the efforts to make sure everybody feels included and a sense of belonging in our school building. The next slide just touches on the intermurals that we're providing and the independent provider programs. If it's an intermural, this is a program that's financed and run through community ed, but my office conducts the majority of the day-to-day operations. We're hoping to add, or we are planning to add, co-ed volleyball in the fall next spring with new facilities coming online. We're really excited about the potential for numbers there. We'd also like to add a hip-hop dance intermural program in the winter, now that we have new facilities coming online, and they would perform at halftime of basketball games, similar to our fall dance performing at halftime of football games. The independent providers are programs that we offer a partnership with. The students can letter, but the fiscal agents are independent of the district. They provide their own insurance. They practice in, for the most part, off-site. And in, a lot of our students get really involved in those programs. So we do count those in overall participation, which does push our student percent up to around 80%. Of all of our students have something that they're identifying with before or after school. So we're excited about that. Just a quick scoreboard update for the fall on the next slide. Some highlights, our girls' swim and dive team were conference champs. Justin and Katie Haycraft were both named Coaches of the Year for Section 2AA. Our boys' cross-country team won the conference and was section runner-up and placed fifth at state, their highest ever finish at the state meet, along with some other strong team performances. The next slide is a picture of that boys' cross-country team at the state meet. We had two individuals place pretty high as well, Gabe Smith and Kyle Nordling, earning All-State honors. The next slide is our mountain biking team. This is again, an independent provider program that just does a tremendous job of getting young biking enthusiasts involved, both at the middle school and the high school. And they're a great group that works really hard, run by primarily all parent volunteers, but do quite well on the race course as well. So third place in the big races this year and had two racers finish in the top five, Calvin and Tom. So congratulations to Bill, a volunteer coach that won Assistant Coach of the Year in mountain biking. Our winter scoreboard, just quickly, boys' basketball was a co-SSC champion this year, their first-ever Salsuburban championship. Boys' swim and dive also won the championship. So we're kind of the SSC swim capital of the world, at least this year anyway, both boys and girls winning a championship. Boys' Nordic Ski won a Salsuburban Conference Championship, went to state for the second year in a row, and finished their highest ever place at seventh overall. And one other thing to mention, Jazz and Kick have gone to state for seven consecutive years, and this year was the first year that they made it to the finals in both Jazz and Kick. So really excited for our dance program. That next slide is just pictures of our Nordic team. That was at the section meet. And just to touch quickly on Cheer on the next slide, Martha, our Cheer team placed fifth in the nation in Comp Cheer this year. That's down in Orlando. So really excited about Cheer. They do a sideline experience in the fall, and they come together and do comp, stunting, and a game day performance in the winter. So they went to Nationals again this year and did a great job. The next slide is that dance program that's done so well the last few years, celebrating some awesome seniors there in the front that helped that program do well. The next slide, we had a special athlete come through the high school. His name is Dawson Garcia, and, you know, extremely accomplished young man that is going to attend Marquette next year, was a McDonald's All-American, broke our scoring record. That's a picture of him with John Sebastian, alumni who previously held the record. Dawson is a tremendous athlete that will likely play in the NBA someday, but maybe his greatest attribute is his kindness, his willingness to lean into empathy, the way he interacted and worked with our students of special needs during the school day and invited them to be a part of his experience during the games was what I'll remember most about Dawson. The next slide is our Athena Award winner. That's Josie Crop. She'll be joining Dawson Garcia at Marquette. Josie was an All-State and All-American lacrosse player as a junior. Of course, we would love to see her playing lacrosse again this spring, and hopefully still we'll get a chance to do that. Josie helped Prior Lake to the first-ever girl state championship last spring as a team. And she's just an outstanding student, athlete, and person. And I'm really excited to see her continue her career at Marquette. And hopefully, we can find a way to make the Athena Award feel special to her. I won't spend a ton of time on the Fine Arts update because you all had Rob Hahn in a couple weeks ago to give you a music in the schools update. But we continue to grow in numbers and in talent in our choir and band programs. Multiple students named to All-State Choir and given SSC honors. And the same is true for band. On the next slide, our band, whether it's marching band or concert band, jazz band, honor band, both at the middle school and the high school level, we just keep raising the bar in terms of performance and participation. I couldn't be more proud of the Band and Choir programs. The next slide is just another picture highlighting the anthem team and the pep band that, and the marching band that perform at our events. The experience that is added for our fans and our community when our band and anthem team is part of those games is amazing and is unique to Prior Lake. We just don't see as much participation around the conference as we do in our co-curricular programs. And the last slide that I'll leave you with is just a theater update. This is another program that is just doing so, so well and has such talent. Mama Mia was maybe the best, likely the best high school performance that I've ever seen from a theater production. And they topped that off this winter with advancing to the state tournament for the first time since, I think, 1991 in one act and earned top honors for the wedding. And so really impressive with Fine Arts. Overall, the program is thriving and kids are participating, and we're doing what we can to create those memories, develop those relationships, and teach and learn those life lessons. So that's the end of the presentation. I'll take any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for us?
I do.
Stacy? Go ahead, Stacy. Stacy, you're muted. Stacy, you're muted.
I got it, I got it. I keep losing myself on the screen. Russ, I was not so much about, I mean, great winter. I saw a lot of the plays and a lot of the stuff. It was awesome. I was just wondering, like, how's it going spring with the distance? I know coaches are trying to reach out and activities is, how are the kids feeling? And how's that?
Yeah, there's a sense of loss, for sure. We did the Be the Light quarter on Monday and Beth was there tonight, where we turned the stadium lights on just as a reminder of support for our athletes. But it's hard not to sense a loss, especially for those seniors that, you know, just don't have an opportunity to play this spring. I'm really proud of the work our coaches are doing and the work that our athletes are doing. We, our first week, the lesson was on mindset and the idea of being stuck at home versus safe at home and the ability to choose kind of how we respond in times of adversity. And our kids have done an amazing job with that. This week, the theme is gratitude, and so they're doing a lot of things to make sure the people in our community know they're grateful for the experiences that they do have and for the people that are working so hard to keep grocery stores open, our safety and medical personnel that deserve a thank you. So our kids will be working in that way. And we're trying to find unique and creative ways to earn a letter this season, so at least they have that to look forward to and accomplish. It feels different when the scoreboard is taken away, but there's still value in what our coaches are doing and what our athletes can experience. So, great question.
Mary?
Well, first of all, for the band and the music, I've been privy to some of the shared online experiences where they're singing and playing together through their online feeds, and it actually sounds really good. It's been quite impressive. And so I want to thank the activities leaders, the band, the art leaders, et cetera, particularly the music leaders for arranging that. And a lot of the kids actually did this on their own, so that was pretty impressive also. I do want to jump off into a little bit of a question about, you know, we increased our fees a little bit and then we also offered those passes this year. Do you have any updates or any numbers at all of how that worked and what the acceptance of that was?
Well, I don't have much of an update in terms of fees, other than to say the increases in expenditures that we expected in transportation officials happened and the fees, the increase in fees helped offset those costs. We did sell 560 student passes this year, and that was a tremendous increase in revenue for the school district. It also helped tremendously with reducing time in line to get into events. It was really popular with our students and we've had many parents ask if there's any chance of doing a family pass or an adult pass in the future. So it's something that my department is looking into. We're trying to determine how many adults are parents of hours that are buying passes to home events to see if there's a way we can have a win-win for both parents and the school district. But I would say the decision to do the student pass was very popular and worked exactly how we had hoped it would work and something that we hope to continue next year.
Really quick, just as a follow-up, one of the goals in the passes was to increase engagement. 560 student passes were sold. Do you know if we actually saw an increase in engagement with the fans and the participation of student support groups at these events?
Well, it's all anecdotal because I don't have the numbers in front of me. We did a clicker every time students came in, so that's data that we have and I can get for you. My own observation, I felt like attendance was much better at boys' basketball, primarily because the team was successful and kids enjoyed going to that game. Our attendance at football games was, it's always really, really well-received. Hockey attendance was up. And so we can get those numbers and I can crunch that for you. It'd be interesting for us to learn as well if we had more students attend because of the pass this year than we had attend when it was free to get into all events except football and hockey last year.
Any other questions? Michael?
I just want to do a follow-up. Thank you for the way you always do sports and the arts and to kind of underscore what Mary was saying, and that is, I also noticed in the paper and stuff, not from us, but just in general, people are worried about the senior athletes, but there's, just to reiterate, there's, I'm the mom of a senior musician who spent four years preparing for his senior jazz recital that would have been last week. And there's the choir that's, you know, crowning performances, celebrating, and all the seniors get their special solos. And so I just want to, as a district, just underscore appreciation, Russ, that you always highlight the arts, but also just say, along with those senior athletes, there are families that are feeling that buildup as well, that are on the arts side of it. So, thank you for that.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions? Jonathan?
Yeah, Russ, I just, you know, the observation that I make every time you give us these numbers, I think about my high school experience in a small, small town and thinking about this massive high school and trying to figure out how in the world could everybody be involved. And whenever you put the slide up with how many kids are in different things, I'm sitting there as fast as I can trying to do head math. And I come up with 600 kids in varsity sports in the fall and again in the winter and when you add in all of the other activities and you tell us that, you know, there's 80% of our kids are involved in something, that is just such a, that's such a great number and it's such a massive credit to your staff and to our coaches and our teachers to get to support kids when they want to create the rock band club, whatever that one was. You know, just because that's how they get connected and I think it's, I think it's amazing. I think there are, I think there's greater engagement in our high school that has an enrollment that's larger than my entire county's population was than what I had in my high school of 300 kids.
Yeah, it's a unique challenge, but an awesome opportunity to have a school our size with the ability to offer as many programs as we do. So I couldn't agree more. It is what most kids would say is their sense of belonging and, you know, what they're most excited about each day. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Russ. Appreciate your report. Keep it up. Moving on to benefit administration and medical and dental rates for 2021. Julie?
Sure, I can talk about this. We talked about a little bit earlier today during our budget discussion is that we had gone out for life and long-term disabilities, so that's the standard, the group life insurance and supplemental life, that's new, and so we're switching companies. We are also adding Fairview Health Services as our employee assistance program. We had a program, and Jim may want to speak about this as well, and then our Delta Dental that is staying at the current rate. Anything I should add? You want to add, Jim?
No, I just think we looked at it, especially now, I think that employee assistance program is really important and there's some things at Fairview, especially being local, that they offer that were additional to what we had with our current provider and we thought the benefit was worth making, making the, making the jump, so.
There's no additional cost for that program.
Do I have a motion to approve the medical and dental rates for 2021 and benefit administration?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
Mary? Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in, Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Myself, aye. That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. I have three proclamations, which I'll read consecutively. Volunteer Appreciation Week, whereas Volunteer Appreciation Week offers the opportunity to recognize and to thank public school volunteers who contribute unselfishly to the success of PLSAS students, teaching and support staff, and the goals of public education. And whereas parental and community involvement is a significant factor in the quality of our schools and the success of our students. And whereas we appreciate the dedicated volunteers who give their time and talent to assist professional educators and support staff. And whereas volunteers reflect the highest values of our society and become role models for students by demonstrating an interest in education. And whereas volunteers are called upon to assist teachers and staff with the day-to-day activities involved in providing a balanced education for our students and are an important part of a team that strives to ensure that each and every one of our students succeeds. And whereas it is fitting to support the goals of this observance, as when parents, schools and communities work together in preparing students, today's students for tomorrow's world. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board recognizes the week of April 20th to the 24th, 2020, as Volunteer Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. That's the first one. The next one is Child Nutrition Employee Week, whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. And whereas the week of April 27th to May 1st, 2020, is Child Nutrition Employee Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children. And the last one. Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. And whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators and mentors, whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now, therefore, we, the school board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, to hereby proclaim the week of May 3rd to the 9th, 2020, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, with the designation of Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, to be National Teacher Appreciation Day within the Prior Lake Savage Area School District. We urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers in our lives. Next on our agenda is policy, and we actually finally have a policy to approve. This is the policy on developing policies. It was reviewed on February 10th, had its first read on March 9th, second read on March 16th, and we're looking for approval this evening. Do I have a motion to approve Policy 208?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Jonathan. Any comments or questions?
I've been looking forward to the policy policy for a long time. I'm excited to hear it.
Excited to finally approve one. Michael, did you have something to add?
No.
Mary, did you?
No, I'm just waiting a vote.
Waiting a vote. We wanted to get it over.
All right, all right, Mary. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself. That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Onto administrative reports, Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Thank you very much. In Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight, we are going to update you on some of the things in which we have been engaged to reach that mission. The world and our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools community has changed incredibly since the last time that we were together on March 16. COVID-19 has caused us to live and work differently than we could ever have imagined a month ago. Tonight, we want to provide you an overview and an update of what has been expected of us as a school district, the many ways we are delivering on those expectations, and the ways our staff have collectively continued to focus on relationships, teaching and learning, and serving our students, families and communities. As we start this presentation, I want to share my deep gratitude to the entire staff and Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and to my team. Our staff are the frontline essential workers who are relentless in their support of our students and our families. You'll see the many ways throughout this presentation that staff members have stepped up to serve our child nutritious service workers, preparing thousands of meals with the help of our bus drivers being able to deliver those. Our custodial staff has stepped up and helped every single department as they've also been maintaining safe and healthy schools. Our kids company staff and from community education, along with many of our peer professionals, have helped with the childcare for the children of our emergency workers. And our teachers and administrators have been learning and redesigning the student experience as they have remained focused on connections, relationships, social, emotional learning and academics. We have been forced to make some fast decisions and move at a really quick pace, and I could not be more proud of our staff and the ways they are serving our families and staff and our students. And I think it's really important for us to remember that the 1,250 employees that we have are also dealing with the impact of COVID-19 on their own lives and their families, just like everyone else's. The experience has challenged us and has exhausted us, and the pace at which we have been working is pretty intense. And through it all, our staff have risen to the challenge time and time again for our community, and for that, I'm really grateful. On Sunday, the next slide, please, Martha. On Sunday, March 16th, Governor Walz announced the first round of his executive orders related to COVID-19, and he directed the Commissioner of Education, as you know, to ensure schools were closed no later than Wednesday, March 19th, for an eight-day period so that they could plan and prepare for distance learning. Our entire administrative team was together when we received the order, and we immediately reviewed the 25-page guidance documents from MBDE and began to plan. The expectation was that schools were to provide distance learning through daily interactions, to provide meals to our students, to provide childcare to families of emergency workers, and to support the social and emotional needs of our students. The enormity of preparing to take an educational system steeped in years of traditional delivery model in a brick-and-mortar building with the regimented schedules has changed completely. And while we were ready for an occasional inclement weather day, the weeks that we have spent planning for this has been a huge undertaking. I could not be more proud of the staff and all of the work that they have done. And I think it's really important to recognize that what our families and what our students and what our staff are dealing with right now is not normal school and it's not normal life, yet they are maintaining the connections with students and staff in ways that they are bringing normalcy to their days. Next slide, please. Thank you, Martha. As we began to prepare that first week on March 16th, we knew that we actually only had three days to prepare because of the executive order. So we actually chose not to have school on that Monday and Tuesday in order to provide more time for planning. We knew that students would need devices in order to engage in the learning, so our technology department and principals got to work on that right away. We knew that students would need learning materials and we got to work on that right away. Additionally, the child nutritious services staff began preparing for meals and designing what they had done. Our bus company became part of that plan and our kids company planned for the work in our childcare program as custodians continued to work and support all that was happening. One of the things that I'm most grateful for is that we have, we've had an infrastructure and technology support that allowed us to be ready for this. Additionally, the teaching and learning team, along with our principals and other educational leaders, have worked really hard in the last several years on innovation and personalized learning, which has allowed us to, as we have built our distance learning plan, to remain, make sure that our teaching and learning remains personalized, purposeful and empowered. And that's, you know, one of the things as we look at changing this entire system in a very short Um, and that's, that's, you know, one of the things as we look at changing this entire system in a very short amount of time. We really have had so many people step up and do amazing things with this. And at this point, I will hand it over to my team to share some of those examples.
So really just jumping in, um, the, as, as Dr. Stallow mentioned, those five days and then spring break, really to get around, kind of the constructs of, of teaching and learning, what that would look like in a distance learning format. And leveraging all the tools that we have in the districts, uh, from software and hardware, and then also expertise in the district. It truly was a hands-on, on everyone having their fingerprints on what made sense, what could we proactively think about? How is this going to work? Um, and also too, reaching out to other districts a, around us as well. And, you know, really sharing ideas. And so it really was, it, it was district-focused, but it was also looking at what was some of the best practice and some, what were some of the approaches that other districts were doing too. And then ultimately, as you can see, put things together to provide guidance to parents and, and, and staff. And then ultimately know that, um, we, we probably aren't going to get this right the first time out of the gate, but we're going to continue to, to try and gather feedback and so surveying and getting feedback throughout this process is just going to be absolutely important to us. At the end of the day, you know, number one is our connections and relationships with kids. Ensuring that, you know, during this very, uh, during this time, it's not normal. How are, how are we, how are we ensuring that kids are connecting with the adults and, and their friends in class? And, and continuing to, to, um, you know, kind of go through this like everyone else is and realizing that this is not anything normal that we, was foreseen. And it's going to be something that probably is part of our new normal moving forward. Uh, next slide, please. As I mentioned on the leveraging the tools, using CSOS, SchoolAG, email, posting assignments, Google meets with students. Our, our staff are just heavily engaged in doing the best they can, working extremely hard and working, um, with a lot of effort to try to do what's right for the students. And, um, you know, post in some of the feedback we, we received was, you know, parents asking on, on the home front, you know, to kind of post, asking teachers to post things for the week so that they could help their students with some time management. But also balance the things that are happening at home as well. Having one, two, three, four students at different levels of their education or different levels of the district, working on, on schoolwork. And then also as parents balancing, you know, their careers or their family lives at home. So a lot going on in the home place. And at the end of the day, we want to do what we can to make this as, as, as meaningful as possible, but also work with families and meet with fam, meet families where they're at. And then also allow our staff to, to grow into this as well, too. Perfection's not the requirement here. It's, it's doing what the best we can to help students and, and keep things moving forward. The next slide just references SchoolAG. And again, it's, it's our online, it's our learning management system for our secondary. Some more things happening. And then, um, the next slide. Uh, it is also allowing us to leverage, uh, some of our other tools to help round out the support that we're providing students. We do have some online subscriptions, um, these like iXL, PlayDoh, where we've used them a little bit in the past in the district, but it is a self-paced, um, adaptive program that's standards-based in math, uh, reading, social studies, science, and, uh, language arts. You know, students are able to go through the activities, they're, they receive, participate in the diagnostic. And then the teacher is able to kind of monitor where they're at relative to their achievement. The goal of distance learning, and we, we have this, it's been stated, is not that kids are in front of a screen all day long. But this is one tool that again, is a tool that rounds out a little bit more of a, of a support for students if they need it from an enrichment side. Or also too, from teachers gaining or gathering information about how students are doing during these distance learning. The idea is, as they're getting the information from students, perhaps they can adjust some of the things that they're doing for distance learning and planning in the weeks coming ahead. The next slide. Uh, again, survey, we sent out a survey after the first week. We'll have a, we, we will continue to have surveys gathering feedback from parents, staff and students in our, how do we continue to make this better? And how do we continue to respond to what, uh, what our stakeholders are telling us? And you can see some of the themes there from the first week. And that first week was all about really a lot of logistics and understanding or really trying to grapple with the new normal. Next slide. On the technology side of things, as you know, we're one-to-one eight, in grades eight through twelve. And then we have teacher carts, school carts, um, for, uh, their site carts, site, um, technology at kindergarten through, uh, seventh grade. And so, technology department under the leadership of Mr. Malazo really went to work to pull and break down that equipment from the cart so that we could deploy them one-to-one and get them in the hands of students so that they could use those for distance learning. First priority was rounding out sixth and seventh grade, and you can see the number we deployed there. And then we went through, uh, the elementaries through an opt-in process to deploy another sixteen hundred iPads to families. And then the other thing we're closely monitoring is working with families around internet access. Mobile hotspots were one of the first things that got cleaned out, um, in a lot of districts and a lot of areas. But a couple of our vendors are taking old smartphones and revamping them into like an internet access point. And we have about forty of those coming in. And we're working with families so that we, uh, that need internet access to try those out. We're going to closely work with those families. And if they prove to be a successful option, we'll order more and continue to, um, work with families who may need that. The reason why we have forty is right now preliminarily, our forty families have reached out to us saying they need internet access. And that's something, again, we're going to closely monitor with our survey. Our principals are doing a wonderful job, social workers, staff, I mean, number one, checking in with kids. But also are there anything that they, is there anything that they need in during this? And, and how can we help them be successful? And if, if we can do something to provide internet access during this time, that's something we're gonna, we're gonna continue to do. Next slide. This is a video of, of pretty much a very well-oiled machine of, of, uh, iPad deployment. Lot of curbside delivery of, everything was tagged and bagged. So families came in, iPads, all the cords were in the bags, they were distributed to the students or excuse me, to the families that were, uh, that were driving up. So it was a very quick process, very well organized. Every site did it a little bit differently, um, but they all did it equally effectively. And I think probably the highlight of, uh, of this entire exercise was staff members seeing kids, talking with families and vice versa, families and kids seeing staff members. When we kind of left things, things were a bit abrupt. You know, on that Friday and then coming back with the stay-at-home and not having, and closing down schools to prepare for distance learning. And so, um, that, you know, through this process, we're looking for those silver linings and connection and making sure that again, we're here for families to the extent needed. That's, that's our job. That's number one, what we're going to do through this process. And so, um, I think there were a lot of happy staff members, a lot of happy families and a lot of appreciate, a lot of appreciation for, for staff members coming in to help to deploy those devices. Next slide. We, we are also providing childcare at Westwood and Edgewood for tier-one workers. The tier-one, we continue to, to receive guidance from the Department of Health and MDE. And, uh, as more workers go back to work, sometimes those groups are added to the tier-one worker list. But in all, we have approximately a hundred and twenty students registered, uh, for childcare at Westwood and Edgewood, uh, for tier-one workers, but we're only averaging approximately thirty-five to forty students a day. We don't end, that's been pretty consistent. And again, um, as, as, uh, staff and, uh, students are coming in, our health services, uh, group is there monitoring kids every day, uh, checking for symptoms and temperatures. They have temperatures or symptoms, they're not allowed in. But again, ensuring that we're having a safe environment for students. The social distancing, hand washing, all the things that are being recommended, students and staff are following. And, uh, we're very appreciative parents and, and very excited kids that, again, safe place, but also connection and a, and a safe place for kids to go while those workers and families go do, do the jobs of, of helping others in our community. So we're very privileged to be able to offer that as well.
I'll talk a little bit about our child nutrition services. They really, um, kicked into full gear when this, um, came about. They've done an outstanding job, um, over the past several weeks. First thing they had to do is apply for the summer school, um, food service program. Normally, our district doesn't qualify for that, but we were able to get a waiver. And this allows us to, um, offer free lunch and breakfast to any student in, um, our area ages three to eighteen, regardless of whatever need that they may have. So they don't necessarily have to qualify for free and reduced lunch in order to receive the, um, free meals. And we do get a higher-than-normal reimbursement for these meals, both for the lunches and the breakfasts. That does help to cover all of the costs for this program. Um, next slide, please. And then, um, again, all of our child nutrition service team members, the majority of them, if they're able to work, they are working um, in the district, helping to provide, um, it's actually this week, it was up to, um, forty-three hundred meals. So that is a lot of meals. And we have, um, one production kitchen and two service kitchens. And we have curbside pickup at, um, Westwood Elementary. And then we have the bus delivery, that goes out to different various areas of our district. And you can find that information on our website where you can see the different um, bus stops and go to pick up a meal. You can sign up online for this. And we do it weekly and you just need to sign up and then come and grab your meal.
I'm good. Good evening again, um, operations and transportation. We are, um, supporting, um, every aspect of, uh, school operations currently. A big emphasis of ours right now is, is obviously on, um, food distribution. Along with the buses rolling meals out to sixteen, um, different spots for, for a community pickup. We also support, um, um, child nutrition through, um, our grounds department, moving food, bringing food, cleaning up. We are sanitizing our school sites, um, getting ready to do some deep cleaning, uh, to get a jumpstart on our summer program without any programming in the building. Construction is, is on schedule and we are actually moving, uh, in some cases ahead of schedule without the, um, occupants in the building. We're really aggressive on our utilities, uh, during this time and, uh, to help, uh, with the budget and, um, keeping our buildings, uh, running at, uh, minimum energy required. And also we're taking advantage of this time, um, to start with our boundary routes and changes. Without a lot of, uh, daily transportation, um, activity, we can, uh, focus pretty heavy on this.
Okay, so related to human resources, this, uh, to give an overview, our goal as a department is really to help every employee understand where they're supposed to go, what they're supposed to do, who they're supposed to report to. And if they have concerns related to leaves, um, around this, that we have a process in place to help them with that. With that in mind, we've, uh, created a, a spreadsheet. Terry talked about twelve hundred and fifty employees. We have all of them on there. And tracking who is working from home, who's working at childcare, how often, how many hours do we owe them if they're an employee, all of those things. So as a, as a district office, we're using that as a way to see who's available to help out in some of the areas that, uh, Jim and Julie and Jeff have all referenced, uh, to be able to see who's available and who's not. Cause as, uh, Dr. Stallow has said, uh, the expectation from the governor is that there are some services that we're supposed to provide and we're supposed to do those with people who we're, we're receiving funds for. Unfortunately, that means that some of our, um, uh, community ed employees, uh, we've read, uh, not have scheduled any hours for them going until the end of April, uh, because of that. And we've replaced many of the things that they've done, like childcare with, um, pares and some licensed staff, who aren't directly providing services to students. So that's happened as well. We've really tried to create a, a resource page for our employees to go to on the, on the website that helps them understand expectations of working from home. What are your leave options, uh, that sort of thing, especially in light of the changes that continue to happen as the government continues to roll out things to help like the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which allows for, um, additional emergency leave. Uh, and also for, uh, Emergency FMLA, Family Medical Leave Expansion. So there's the process of understanding what that means and what they can use it for, and then pushing that out to our employees so that we have one process and one way for them, uh, to feel that at least they're getting the answers they need and the process that they need to follow. Just as a, a point of reference, we've had about seventy requests for leave information from employees and over half of those have submitted leaves. Um, and like I said, uh, in the study session, I think you approved three as a board, you approved three leaves tonight. And we've gotten thirty-one additional. So that gives you an idea of the, of the volume. Plus, we're going through a lot of those things that are brand-new as far as references. And they continually change, uh, as the days go on and, and they're updated. So, uh, from an HR perspective, uh, I think, uh, my staff with the help of a lot of people at, at DSC uh, have, uh, have really stepped up to this. They put in a lot of hours trying to help out employees and we continue to field questions. Uh, I feel, I feel comfortable that we're getting a rhythm down now. And I think, uh, they will too as we go through the days and, and probably weeks here going forward. So that's the report from HR.
And from a communications perspective, uh, we are just working really hard at, uh, tracking all of these, the information that's changing very rapidly and delivering it to our stakeholders and those that they are accustomed. Email, text, video, social media, newsletters, uh, the Laker connections will still go out as well. And, um, we've also, uh, created a dedicated webpage where people can find, um, the details of our distance learning plan. Not just from the teaching and learning perspective, but also the social, emotional side of things and how we can support students and families who might need some additional resources. So we are consistently pushing information out from that webpage so that people don't have to dig and try to find things. But, um, trying to get it into their hands in, in easy ways. Next slide, please. Um, and, um, Martha, you can play this video if you want. As I talk, um, you know, this is a video that showcases, um, elementary families picking up their instructional supplies that they might need during distance learning from their school. And it also shows, um, meal pickups too. All of these social media, um, channels that you see listed here are showcasing a lot of videos of this nature that help, um, people to know where they can, um, find information, uh, from a logistical perspective. So weekly we're putting out, um, the meal form and helping people to know where the delivery routes are and the pickup routes are for meals. But we're also trying to communicate, um, in some of the positive side of things and the feel-good side of things. Uh, we've been posting several videos from, um, teachers, so just minute-long snippets of teachers and support staff saying hello to families and just stuff. And, um, we just, uh, had a video of the Redtail Ridge staff for you that went through the neighborhood. So, um, we're trying to keep things positive and, and set a, a positive light on things to the best that we can and also getting, uh, information to people as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, during the covid nineteen pandemic, uh, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools staff have truly band together. And I think we've rediscovered again that which, uh, unites us, which is really a shared commitment to our mission of helping all students, all learners reach their full potential. Um, I do want to acknowledge the difficult decisions, um, financially that we've had to make because of covid nineteen as well. When the governor first announced his executive order on, on March fifteenth, he stated the expectation, um, to keep all employees working. And we were grateful to do that, even though along the way we had questions about the funding relief that would come to fund to the child nutritious services, fund as well as our Fund Four Community Ed Fund as well. At this point, we've been able to keep all of our child nutritious services staff, um, employed as Julie shared, uh, with the reimbursed meals, um, and they also have a fund balance that they can, uh, dip into if needed. Regarding Fund Four, our community ed staff and programs, um, we did include them in the we did include them in the distance learning plan from the beginning. The early guidance to districts outlined that districts could do that, but they weren't required to. We remained hopeful that we would hear information that funding relief would come to these vital programs and services. We also asked our kids company staff to continue to provide childcare to the children of our emergency workers because they were our, are our experts. On April 2nd, however, we did get some direction reviewing that the executive, executive order does not preclude districts from making budget-based layoffs of staff and administrators for programs where dedicated funding streams don't exist. And in our fee-based programs, most of which our community ed programs are, that, that was impacted. So we made the very difficult and painful decision last week, as you know, to no longer schedule work for most of the community ed employees. This decision was not about what we value or don't value because the programs and services that our community education programs and youth programming, adult programming, before and after-school programming and early learning are all highly valued and successful programs. The decision was made because these are primarily fee-based programs. And without a commitment of funding relief, the decision was made in order to sustain the long-term vitality of the community education programs. I know there are concerns about the decision and the timing of the decision, especially that the preschool students, families, and, and staff did not have a chance for closure. And I recognize this concern. And I'm grateful for the deep relationships that are established with staff and our youngest learners. Relationships truly do matter. We did ask some community ed staff to stay on longer last week to help with the transition of childcare. I am grateful to all of our community education staff. And I trust that our community education leaders, together with colleagues across the state, are working on innovative plans for community education programs going forward, should the COVID-19 situation continue. And I know that we all hope to return to normal very soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any administrative reports?
Not this evening.
Move on to board reports. Enrique?
Nothing new to report.
Okay, Stacy?
Nothing for me.
Michael?
Nothing to report. Just a great thank you across the board to everybody for the extraordinary efforts under trying times.
Mary?
Nothing to report.
Melissa?
Nothing at this time.
Jonathan?
Good here.
Isabel?
I do have something to report.
Yay!
I'll give a little fun update kind of about what student council has been up to. We've been meeting a lot as an exec board within the last couple of weeks. We actually just wrapped up our executive board elections for next year. So we already have our entire exec board lined up and we're really excited for that. Also a little melancholy just because student council is coming to an end for us seniors. So it's really hard for us to let go, but we're really excited for next year and what's coming. We also had talked about kind of revamping our, we usually have our spring committees for the last part of the year. And instead, this year, we have it just a little bit socially-distanced and revamped it a bit. So our treasurer, Emma, our treasurer, Emma, is working to, on our social medias, highlight the sports and the athletes who would be having their spring seasons right now. Just a lot of other sports that would be going on right now or doing the same thing. But we want to make sure that we highlight them as much as we can on our social media platforms. Then our parliamentarian, Gracie, she's been working on a virtual talent show, which is actually one of our spring events. But instead, we're going to ask students to send in videos and just share their talents and kind of spread some joy from home and stay together in that regard. Then our secretary, Abby, has been working on a plan for Decision Day for seniors. And since Decision Day is on May 1st and we won't be able to wear our shirts where, you know, basically are just any of our decisions for after-high-school weather, that's going into the army, going to a two-year college, a career, anything like that. What she's been working on is sending out a Google form, asking people, asking seniors what their plans are. And we will be highlighting them on an Instagram page. And we already have over 120 responses. And we sent it out a couple of days ago. So we'll be posting all of those next week, kind of leading up to Decision Day, to just highlight our seniors and let them know that we're still, you know, we're still rooting for us and still aware that, you know, we've got plans. We're excited for them. And then our vice president and delegate-at-large, Delaney and Parker, they've been working on reaching out to the elementary, middle, and the rest of the high school then, asking staff and teachers to send little short videos to the seniors. And then we'll put little videos together for, like Red Hill Ridge, Greenwood. We'll put them all together and send it out to the seniors so everybody can go and look back at their past teachers and kind of remember, have a little bit of sentimentality at the end of our senior year now. And then our historian, Abby, and she's also our president-elect for next year. She's been working on different positive social media posts throughout the week. Today, she had posted a little funny joke on our Instagram page. And I know a lot of people enjoyed it. And some kind of, I think they have a plan for each day, like a Try It Tuesday, encouraging people to like go outside, chalk on sidewalks, stuff like that. And so we've got a lot going on in student council,